Good morning. Welcome to our meeting of Tuesday, August 12. We are going to have a roll call first, please.
Thank you, Chair. Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
Supervisor Madrone?
Present.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Chair Bushnell?
Good morning again.
All are here. Also, Chair, we will need to do manual voting today?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Can we salute our flag, please? CAO Hayes, are there any modifications to the agenda today?
Good morning, Chair Bushnell. There are no modifications this morning.
Okay, we'll go right into our consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that the Board wishes to talk about? And then we'll go to proclamations. No? Okay, so we will go to Supervisor Arroyo.
Chair Bushnell, would you like to do the proclamation first or the closure in honor of?
Closure.
Okay, great. So today's meeting is going to be closed in the memory of David Lindberg. And while that is technically the end of the meeting, it is part of our consent calendar. And so we do have a, I guess, an adjournment certificate here that's signed by the Board that I'll share with Sylvia, David's wife. And just wanted to say a few things about David. I had the chance to work with him on the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission Board. So our monthly meetings, he was always just a joy to be around. Big-hearted, big booming voice, big tall guy, always came with, that's a very sort of casual meeting setting in that we're all very conversational. And David certainly excelled in that setting, but he also brought really detailed notes every time. So he was the one that was incredibly organized, brought all the details about the Humboldt County Municipal Water District, where he was a board member, and all of the operations, where Ruth Lake was at, a few geological details as a geologist from time to time, and just really cared diligently about the work that he did for the district and just brought a lot of joy to the settings that he was in. So I know I've seen him in many places in public life over the years, and he will be greatly missed. I'm going to just take the opportunity to say that for his family and colleagues' sake. Thank you.
Anyone else? Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, it was a surprise, a sad surprise when I heard about and read about David's passing. I want to say that I've spent many years interacting with him, decades, I think now, as an engineer and a professional in the design field, and have worked not necessarily alongside him, but on projects where he's also been working on as well. One of the things, and then also just interacting with him in the community constantly. He was not shy about talking to me about whatever was on his mind. But I want to frame it in the context of, he, in his own way, was a community activist. He really was very, you know, he kept it on the down-low a little bit, I would say. He very, he was not shy about giving his opinions to folks he thought could make change and then also himself, putting himself in the space of doing that as well. I want to say that he had asked and talked about with me oftentimes about the political processes by which these community projects that he's working on, both as a professional and just in general, which is just a joy to kind of nerd out with people like that on sort of the physical parameters and how to get those things actually going. And so the viewpoint that he offered was not the normal one, and I don't mean "normal" by the standard, by, you know, what I mean by that, it was unique. Unique because he had a unique perspective. And yes, he also loved his motorcycles and his music and all the other cool things that he was into. I just want to say, like, he was a very colorful, not necessarily super outwardly, but when you talk to him, it was all there, 100%, just a super fun person to hang out with and great to run into him. And I am just so delighted that he chose public service, you know, in his sort of retirement, I guess you'd call it in that way, but he was always kind of there anyway. So it just seemed such a great fit. And so anyways, it's just a really cool person. And so it's sad when we have these, you know, these eulogies, I guess you'd say, but I really want to emphasize that the guy was living his life like we all should, you know, doing the service, doing the work, being a great community member at all levels. That's all I have to say.
Supervisor Bone?
And he gave life. Fifty-six gallons of blood donated to the blood bank. My mom has been passed away for a long time now, but she came back and says, "You know a guy named David Lindberg?" I said, "Yeah, works at Laco." What a nice man. He gives us a lot of blood. Fifty-six gallons, the people he probably helped. And then you go to his involvement with HumDogs. We used to have HumDogs out at Redwood, we still do it at Redwood Fields and at Redwood Acres, and he was involved, the agility, Kiwanis. I go back, you know, he's probably one of the foremost geologists we had. He would be in here every once in a while and get a little challenged sometimes, but he always stood his ground. I always appreciated that. He was just a good dude. I never worked side-by-side him. I got to talk to him a few times here, talked to him a lot more on the phone, and it was always such a, it was just great to always see him. And we've kind of lived out there and cuttin' and hung out, and he's just, he's going to be missed, his expertise is going to be missed, and the friendships he's involved with in all the Boy Scouts, all of them, all the things he's helped out over the years, is what he's given to the community outside his professional life far outweighs. But fifty-six gallons of blood, you know how many lives that may have changed and saved? That's a commitment that, you know, and we don't pay for blood here, so he wasn't looking for cash. Anyway, David, Sylvia, Cody, your family, I am, I was very sorry to hear this and very sorry. Good dude, good dude.
I was shocked and really sad to hear the news. I met David and Sylvia both through my job here and had some really interesting conversations with him on the phone and then throughout, you know, his voluntarism ran into him and really enjoyed him and really had such admiration for his work that he did. And Sylvia, I had some good conversations with you as well. I called Rex when I read it in the paper, and I'm like, "This can't be our David." And I just am so sad for your family and appreciate Supervisor Arroyo bringing this in honor and memorial of him and just really wish your family peace as you navigate without him. Does, do you, does any, do you want to say anything? You don't have to.
I don't, I'm trying.
I do want to say, one of the comments online was, "He was the kind of person we should all aspire to be." And if that doesn't cover it in a nutshell, 110%, nothing can.
I really appreciate that you've done this for us. And, just a minute. Going through his life over the last two weeks, sometimes I didn't even know how much he was involved. I was doing my own things too, and we had a wonderful son, and I was PTA person all the way through, and so.
I remember that.
So I just really appreciate him even more than I did before it all happened. And the one thing that has really helped is that he was doing something he loved. He was darn scooter, but I went, I followed that scooter for 9,000 miles throughout California, Oregon, Washington. The ride around the lake was incredibly beautiful. So he was in a good space, and I want everybody to be in a good space on their last moment. And so that has really helped us a lot. So thank you very much. I heard all of your names. But he really loved serving his community, and he loved Humboldt County. And one of the things he was working on was to create a scholarship fund in the name of Gary Carver, because they were very close. So that is something that he is, I'm going to maintain that for him, so just another little thing that he wanted to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sylvia. Supervisor Arroyo?
We have a couple of folks from the Water District here. Do you want to?
Sure, they're welcome.
I don't know if now would be a good time.
I'm actually here both as kind of representing SHN Engineering and Geologists, with emphasis on geologists. David, he was super big in our geological engineering community when we got the news at my office. I, well, half the office is devastated. He was a mentor to many of them. And so in that respect, you know, he kind of lives on, having trained and taught so many other people in the field. I think the other thing I really liked about David was, you know, he was a sole proprietor, small businessman, and he would take the projects on that some of our larger, even though we're very small companies like Laco, SHN, you know, we're very small companies, but even the smaller projects, David would take those on. And I'm talking the small agricultural-type projects. He just wanted to basically make sure that everybody in the community had access to this kind of professional services. So I really appreciate David for that. We, at the Water District, will certainly miss David. I'm really happy that he, you know, he was vice chair, and he did get a chance to chair one of the meetings since Michelle was absent, and it was great. I think he had a good time, and he was going, "We're doing it right, we're doing it right." There's no, you know, "You're a leader, man, don't worry about it, it's all good." So anyway, just, thank you, everybody.
Hold on, we're going to give you the certificate, Sylvia. Okay, we're going to go on to our next proclamation that also comes to us from Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. I believe we have someone here to receive this proclamation today. Feel free to come on up. All right. This proclamation is in honor of, it's about supporting access to health care and resources for Two-Spirit, transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex people. It'll be abbreviated as 2STGI throughout in Humboldt County. Whereas gender diverse people, including Two-Spirit, transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex, have existed throughout history and across cultures, including in the local Humboldt area, where the Wiat tribe uses the term in Sulotluk of Gumel, which means "both together." And whereas Humboldt County recognizes the contributions of our 2STGI employees, community partners, residents, and visitors who are part of our vibrant community and deserve to be treated with dignity, equality, and respect. And whereas nationally, there were over 500 bills restricting the rights of LGBTQ-plus people introduced in state legislatures across the country during the 2023 legislative year, over 533 such bills introduced nationwide in the 2024 legislative year, and already over 937 bills filed across the nation in 2025 as of June, including six in California, and multiple federal actions have already changed the lives of 2STGI people. And whereas these bills and other actions disproportionately target 2STGI people and include efforts to prohibit access to life-saving medical care, prevent youth from playing sports alongside their friends, erase people's identities from vital records and state driver's licenses, ban books that include 2STGI people in history, prohibit people from using restrooms and facilities where they are safe and affirmed for who they are, frame transgender people as inherently dishonorable, and falsely conflate transgender women and girls with men seeking to harm women and girls. And whereas studies have shown that access to gender-affirming health care improves the overall well-being of transgender people and is associated with better mental health outcomes and lower risks of suicide, which aligns with Humboldt County's community health improvement plans focused on suicide prevention as a key public health priority. And whereas the state of California passed SB 107 in 2022, which protects individuals seeking gender-affirming health care from out-of-state prosecution and explicitly prohibits law enforcement agencies from knowingly making or participating in the arrest or extradition of an individual pursuant to an out-of-state arrest warrant based on another state's law against receiving gender-affirming health care in California. And whereas both patients and health care professionals within Humboldt County are protected by California law from attempts to impose criminal punishment, civil liability, administrative penalties, or professional sanctions based on the laws of other states when gender-affirming health care is lawful in the state of California and meets standards for professional practice. And whereas in the May 2024 Humboldt County 2SLGBTQIA-plus school climate survey taken by middle and high school students from across Humboldt County, the majority of gender diverse students report their mental health is being negatively impacted by anti-transgender legislation from across the country, not feeling safe at school, and avoiding school restrooms due to fears about their personal safety. And whereas in the same survey, nearly one-third of 2STGI youth report living in fear of losing their housing due to being or seeming queer, with 10% reporting having been kicked out of their home in the prior year due to anti-queer bias, which is further aligned with a key public health priority in the Humboldt County Community Health Improvement Plan of addressing housing instability and homelessness. And whereas Humboldt County will not tolerate acts of hate, discrimination, bullying, or harassment of people who are 2STGI. And whereas Humboldt County affirms its commitment to support the 2STGI community, to maintain and improve resources that support health and quality of life, and to protect the privacy of our community's personal information, including health information. And whereas in Humboldt County, we believe in and reaffirm the inherent value of each and every resident of our county, including our 2STGI communities, individuals, and families without exception. Now therefore be it resolved that Humboldt County recognizes the importance of gender-affirming health care, including mental health services, as matters of essential daily living and equality, and will ensure to the greatest extent permitted by law that those rights are upheld for all residents and visitors to our county. And Steve and I have co-sponsored this proclamation today. Thank you, Steve, for joining me in that.
Esteemed council members, my name is Aisha Candrian Morton. Thank you so much. This is a gift for all of you. Thank you so much.
Natalie, can I, I'll get a picture.
Thank you. My name's Aisha Candrian Morton. I'm the clinical director and a youth mentor at Queer Humboldt. And I just wanted to thank you so much for this proclamation. It's very meaningful for us because the proclamation happened because of youth advocacy in our community. It started when Humboldt County community members reached out to us at Queer Humboldt, requesting help in creating a proclamation such as this one. Our youth leaders facilitated a series of sessions where they drafted a sample proclamation and then met with elected officials such as yourselves to discuss this idea and advocate for the proclamation. Like the proclamation said, all over the country, politicians are trying to gain political points by abandoning the rights of trans people, and it is especially significant to us that we have local support from the Board of Supervisors here in Humboldt County. Thank you so much for doing the right thing and letting our trans community members know that you haven't forgotten them and their rights. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I also forgot to mention that it's Transgender History Month, August, in California. It's fairly new, within the last couple of years that this has been acknowledged in California. So I also urge people to learn about trans history, and I think there's a lot to learn for all of us. I know I mentioned to folks who were here to speak on this item that I was going to pull it, and so process-wise, I forgot to do that. So you'll be able to speak with the regular consent calendar items. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Any comments before? Yeah, so we'll go on this item, or we're going to just finish up the consent calendar also. Supervisor Madrone?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is just on the basic consent calendar. I just wanted to give a big shout-out to our ADA team. On the consent calendar, we have the final acceptance of the Humboldt County Courthouse Restrooms. And if you haven't had a chance to use them, please do. They are amazing, and this team is performing all kinds of amazing things for us all over the community to improve access for everybody, but they don't get a lot of recognition. I just wanted to give a big shout-out to them. It's a great team of people, working very hard under Karen Clower, our deputy CAO, and just really want to say how much we appreciate their incredible work. And then lastly, I want to say, and I imagine I see there's a representative from Ask Me here that will probably come up to speak, but I just wanted to thank the employees at Ask Me, that is, the vast majority of our employees here in the county. And I really want to say thank you for hanging in there. It was a long process to get to today's final agreement, but please know that all of our employees are really valued. We wish we could pay everybody a whole lot more, and maybe someday we'll get to a place where we're owning our own facilities rather than leasing, and those and other steps will get us into a better place with our budget. But I just wanted to say thank you to Ask Me and all of our employees for their efforts there. So, thank you.
Anyone else comment on the consent calendar? Supervisor Wilson?
I want to go back to the proclamation that was just forward by Supervisor Madrone and Arroyo. Just want to recognize, and I think we need to recognize, that transgender and diverse gender identities, our support of that supports freedom. I just want to be really clear about that, because it affirms our rights to self-determination and self-expression. When we, as a society, respect how individuals understand and experience their own gender, which sometimes, I have to say, those are some uncomfortable conversations that they can be. It upholds our fundamental principle that people should be free to live as their true selves without facing discrimination or being forced to conform to others' expectations about how they should be. Yeah, I just want to put that out there.
Okay. We're going to go out to public comment, but I have one, I want to thank Larry Miller, who is on the Human Rights Commission for the Second District, and he's going to be reappointed. Thank you. We always appreciate people that are willing to be on these committees and commissions. It's a lot of work and a lot of their free time, and we're just really happy that people are willing and really want to thank him for wanting to stay. And then we're going to go out to public comment, and we'll start with the Zoom.
There is no one on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, we'll go to public comment in the room on anything on the consent calendar. And you will have three minutes. Good morning, Kent.
Good morning.
If, before you start, is time, if you guys want to line up, just can get in line, and then as each speaker comes forward, thank you.
Thank you for my opportunity this morning. I did want to note in Human Resources, Item 18 and 20, there's supplemental budgets to the tune of $260,000 in '18 for a purchased insurance budget unit. And then Number 20 is liability insurance budget unit for $200,000. In other words, we're spending more money on our liability. It sounds like defending ourselves regarding the things that we do that put us in jeopardy financially. That's not a good trend. The other thing, I'm very pleased to see, the one that's in between that, which was spoken just recently, Number 19, to ratify the agreement with AFSMI. I would have a request in the future that as soon as these contracts are up, in fact, in advance, start your negotiations, rather than having these people wait for a very long time to have this done. I think that's part of the respectfulness of the process that's been lacking, perception that we just have an attorney that just says, "No, no, no," and that's a job because you don't want to. I think that's something that should change here. I think that our employees should be given, where they don't have to come in here for signs, meeting after meeting, you know, "Please give us our contract." So that would bode well. I think that'd be a great change to see in the future, hopefully. And so I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today on the consent.
Thank you. Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
I didn't actually prepare anything this morning, but I've come before the Board before as the Chair of the Queer Affinity Group, and when I saw this item on the, this proclamation, thankfully Natalie reached out and made me aware of it, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for bringing this proclamation and for accepting it, because I think it's really important now more than ever to show members of our community that we stand with them and that they are important to us and that they matter, because it can be a very scary and difficult time right now for members of the trans and Two-Spirit, gender nonconforming community. And so I just wanted to say that I stand with them as well, and yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Sarah Ireland, President of AFSMI Local 1684. Before I start on negotiations, I just want to say, as a parent of a transgender child, I appreciate your proclamation. It's a scary world, and I'm thankful that my child doesn't have to live in fear in our county. Aside from that, I want to thank the Board for finally signing off on the contract. It's been a long process. I've been in the negotiation process more than one time, and this is by far the longest process. I do have to agree, it would be nice if we could not negotiate with Jack Hughes every year, or every two years, or every three years, and listen to him say no, and hear the real reasons why we can't have the things we have instead of having him in front of us. However, I'm thankful that we have a contract in place. We have understood throughout this process that the county does not have money to give us increases. And while I will never back down from my opinion that management and the Board of Supervisors should not get raises before your staff, I'm grateful that you did not do that this year. I also will never back down from exactly what Supervisor Madrone has said. Stop leasing, stop renting, buy our buildings, save some money, stop opening offices where we don't need them, and let us do our jobs and get paid to do our jobs, because we are the ones who make this county happen every single day. Lots of hours, lots of work, and most of us do it simply because we love human beings and we want to serve them. Not a day goes by that I don't do my job with the focus on the humans in front of me, and I serve some of our most vulnerable populations, our elderly, disabled people. And my only goal is to keep them in a position where they can stay at home if they want to, that they can be covered with the medical coverage that they need and have the food benefits that they need. So I encourage you to remember that as we move forward, I hope that we improve our budget, but our staff members definitely deserve to see the benefits of anything that we bring into this county. Thanks again for the process, and I really hope that our 32-hour Workweek Committee can get off the ground and come to some great decisions together. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Final thoughts from the Board, any, and looking for a motion, please.
I'll move approval of consent.
Supervisor Madrone? Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Supervisor Bone.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Chair Bushnell.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Okay, thank you. So next, we will go to public comment on non-agenda items, and we'll go to the Zoom first.
There is none, Chair.
We'll go to public comment on non-agenda items in the room. If I could have you line up? If you have a, okay, you'll have three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Casagrande. I'm a lifelong resident of Eureka. I am present here today to bring attention to the grand jury report released July 11, 2025, regarding the Humboldt County Animal Shelter. To some, it may seem to just be a building located close to the airport, out of view, that houses animals needing to be placed in homes. But this report offers another aspect that is just as important. It brings attention to the staff and volunteers both at the shelter and other rescue organizations that spend countless hours trying their best to make a good cause better. That is what I would like to focus on, the people who are so dedicated. While I'm not directly associated with any of them personally, I am a years-long donor to the shelter's emergency medical fund, the annual holiday fundraiser auction that raises money for extra medical treatment needed. This happens both online and at the shelter to raise funds for medical needs not covered by the county. I have also attended fundraisers that have been held at businesses who have generously allowed them a place to raise money also for medical needs and showcase some of the dogs currently up for adoption. I have found these volunteers and the work they do at the shelter, including their Facebook postings, taking time and effort to create and update the public on animals up for adoption in the report. It mentioned the limited days and hours the shelter is open. This is something I'm especially hopeful can be addressed. I was really impressed earlier this year when the ASPCA's Annual Rescue Effect Campaign was a part of the Humboldt County Animal Shelter's participation in a fee-waived adoption event that was held on the weekend. It appears this was highly successful event as many were adopted. I am hopeful this success, along with the grand jury report that addressed weekend, days, and hours, is something that can be achieved soon. This success brought me the need for public awareness. I am hopeful the county would be able to address some of the issues in the report through any grants or local collaboration, all while honoring the volunteers who have worked tirelessly on behalf would be a win-win. The report addresses establishing a Volunteer Appreciation Day for all Humboldt County volunteers on April 20th, which is National Volunteer Recognition Day. Thank you very much for allowing me the time and your attention to this matter. I do hope that the volunteers can be appreciated by all of you. They do do our work. They do help a lot. I've seen it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Okay. Hi, good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to address the, regarding Assembly Bill 470. I was very alarmed to read the article in Sunday's Time Standard regarding AT&amp;T taking its fight over landlines, carrier of last resort, or call, caller, and copper wiring to the state legislature. It seems that AB 470 has passed the Assembly and is now before the State Senate Appropriations Committee. This matter seems to me to be, to be, to be becoming a David and Goliath matter. I'm very much concerned that if this bill passes the Senate, what will happen to people living in remote areas of not only Humboldt County, but those areas throughout the state of California where cell phones are useless? In case of a natural disaster, even in the Eureka area, cell phones become useless and the good old landline becomes the only source of communicating to the outside world. I left a phone message with our State Senator Mike McGuire yesterday and hope he receives it. I imagine that such, that each of you supervisors have areas in your districts where cell phones are useless. My husband and I lived in, lived full-time in southwestern Humboldt County for a period of time and know just how isolating it can be when there is an emergency. You simply cannot go out your front door and yell for help when your closest neighbor may be a mile or more away. Thank you for your time. I have copies of my public comment as well as the newspaper article for each of you. Respectfully, Phyllis Coy.
Thank you. We can't do back and forth, but I do want to comment that this Board has opposed AB 470 twice and that not last week, but the week before with the CAO's office, I met with Mike McGuire's team and talked about the concerns of what this would do for rural areas in Humboldt County as well as rural areas in other counties. So we are, other counties are also opposing unless amended, which means that there are a lot of things that we're asking for. So we, this Board especially is actively involved in conversations. I just want you to know that.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I know it's.
I'm sorry, we can't do back and forth, but I just wanted to give you that information.
Okay, so who do I give?
Right here, over here to our Council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Kent. And thank you for coming up.
Good morning. In the written comments I sent to you, one thing, free piles are not free. I hope you read that. I think it's something that some people think would cut down a lot as far as cleaning up messes in, all over where things are left there and they get dragged around. A lot of staff time is spent, I know, in little cities like Blue Lake. The other one was regarding the flock cameras, and I realize the county has put some out there, and I totally understand when Rex made a comment that that was backed. But part of it is, we don't have this countywide. We need it like other places, and they need more of them. Let's just say hypothetically, somebody was involved in a hit-and-run on Broadway and somebody died. These kind of cameras are the kind of things that enable us to put together certain things that need to be done legally. So strongly support we use those technology. We have a recall going in Blue Lake, which is going nowhere. A lot of money will be spent, and I doubt whether they'll get 30% on that one. I did have something here I wish to read. May not get through the whole thing. Hello, I have two children. I am currently in the fight of our lives involving Humboldt County Courts and CWS in the last month. My tribe, Karuk, notified me that they are going to legally intervene in our case. Thank goodness, as of today, have not been able to see my children in 81 days. My children disclosed extreme abuse at the hands of their father. Unfortunately, and quite criminally, CWS has given the children to the exact person they disclosed abused by. I am writing you because I am just desperate for support and advocacy. Everyone who sits and hears what we've been through is confused and even enraged with what CWS has done. I came across you because we have a mutual friend, and I felt inclined to reach out because quite honestly, I'm willing to do anything to help me and the kids. How do I get a tribal expert witness? I feel like you probably have beneficial knowledge of this, as well as possibly connections with others who can offer support, education, advocacy, or guidance. I know these things can only come after you yourself are informed about the case, and so my hope is that you will be willing to meet. My kids disclosed that the worst abuse possible in three separate casts to a counselor, pediatrician, and repeatedly to social workers. They need to be heard and saved. Can you help? This was a transmission, and I did a little bit of research. I did a PRA request. We don't have any MOUs with any of the tribes regarding ICWA. And this was sent to Richard England some time ago, back in '24, with no response. So I'm not letting this one go. We need to work on ICWA. We need to follow through on things, and things need to change at the county level regarding the protection of these children. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Hi, good morning.
Good morning. I did take the bus today. I still don't feel quite comfortable parking my bike outside the courthouse, so I just want to remind you, it would be wonderful to ride that trail, but come here and safely park my bicycle. My name's Joanne McGary. I want to talk about three things, the three Rs: rubble, rumble, and rethinking the encampments in our community. I'll start, the past, present, and future, I'll start with the present. We had an event over the weekend up at the airport, and it was a nostalgic event for many, made the national news apparently. It was the second one that has taken place. I saw pictures. I did not attend deliberately. I was at the lantern ceremony instead on Saturday, which was honoring the Hiroshima-Nagasaki anniversaries. But I do want to say, and I said it before, in a climate-changing world, having displays using a lot of fossil fuels and polluting the air with smoke to entertain people, some of the people in the community and those who drove here to see it, is one thing, but there are many, many, many of us who would rather such a thing never exist again in our community. It's a costly event in many ways, so I would just like to say, let us really reconsider rumble in, over the redwoods as an event in our community. And I just think also, I'm wearing my watermelon hoodie, so I want to talk about rubble. A lot of the pictures of that rumble reminded me of the strafing of Vietnam by our military back in the '60s and '70s, and it also reminded me of the weapon monies, and weapon and monies we give to the State of Israel to do what it's done to Gaza and reduce it to rubble. And we did pass a ceasefire resolution, and I just want to say that we didn't do enough in that ceasefire resolution. We needed to ask our Congressman to stop allowing funding US funds to go to the State of Israel to destroy and commit genocide in Gaza. So finally, the rethinking concept of the encampments. As you know, there was a lot of activity at the Arcata City Council meeting, and I'm really concerned about the unhoused in our county. And I stopped by that campground between Eureka and Arcata and just found out when I asked if I could speak to the new owner that that wasn't possible because they lived in Dubai. And I find that a really interesting thing we should look into. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we'll go on to our next item, which comes to us from our Clerk of the Board, Tracy D'Amico, and I'll let her introduce it.
Good morning. Please bear with my voice this morning. Let's see, so on January 7th, the Board of Supervisors directed the Clerk of the Board's office to review three boards and commissions for a deep dive for recommendations for changes, concerns, et cetera. And this is a report on the information that I came up with when I was reviewing the Humboldt County Fish and Game Advisory Commission. The Fish and Game Advisory Commission is established by an ordinance, and therefore it's also in our county code. And any changes to recommendations from your Board or changes to the commission will come back through an ordinance process. To review how this information and data was collected, I attended a meeting. I typically tend, attend one of these meetings every year to discuss certain issues with this commission. And I went to them and talked to them about their membership, their charge, bylaws, agenda items, et cetera. I also spoke with each of you about some of those findings and also what you were looking to gain from a deep dive into this review. The membership currently consists of three members per district, which you all appoint. They serve four-year terms and are often reappointed. Currently, there are five vacancies. You each have one vacancy in your district. The membership sometimes lacks a quorum. That's a lot of people to get to a building once a month, so that is one concern that I had. Some other issues that we talked about, and I helped explain to them, partially due to perhaps our lack of communication, is that they're supposed to produce an annual report every year. They haven't been doing that. They do bring a lot of agenda items to the Board compared to other boards and commissions. I went back and looked, and every year there are at least two or three items that they bring, which are issues that are brought up at their meetings. They always come with the grant proposals and the grant recommendations. And then there's been letters to your Board concerning things such as fish cleaning stations, public access to rivers and coastal areas, low-flow river on the eel water issues. They've brought letters regarding hunting seasons, changes of dates, fishing concerns. They're very much in tune to what's happening in our community. I do have to say that they are a very involved group when you do attend. They have just instigated inviting you as Board members occasionally to a meeting so that you can also see how they're functioning and then establish a better line of communication between you and them. I think this is going to be a great asset for all of them. Their Board meetings are very interesting. I'm always really excited to see the membership and to see their enthusiasm for the topics that they are reviewing and studying. So we have talked with them a little bit, and they would not be opposed to a change in the membership as far as my interpretation of what was being said. We are going to work with them. They've established a subcommittee at their last meeting to compose that annual report that will be coming to you, which is going to be a valuable asset. We have instigated with them, or we're in the process of setting them up in the Neo-Gov system, which is our countywide training. They're going to be sort of a test for us on completing their ethics, sexual harassment, and other trainings that the county offers to its staff. We're now trying to establish that process for the Boards and Commissions members, and they were all agreeing to be the active participants for that. Overall, I think this, this commission is functioning at a higher level than some of the other commissions, and I can, I can see where their conversations are very valuable in their meeting. We're just going to work on bridging that cap, that gap between what's been happening at the meeting and then sharing that information with you all. So with that, it's really your Board's discretion if you would like to make changes. I'm not sure if any of the members are online today. I knew that there was some public comment about it, but I'm not sure if they're here to speak about it. So if you have any other questions or concerns, I'm open to a conversation with you all on this topic.
Thank you. Are, are there any members of this commission online or in the audience that would like to say something?
There is none online.
Okay, and is there anyone in the audience? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the Board, and I'll just say my two cents. I think most of us have been to a meeting. I was at a meeting. I enjoyed the commission a lot, and they're, I think Tracy's correct, they're very in tune with what's going on around Humboldt County and serve a value, value, their value is very, very well for Humboldt County. I would like to reduce the number of people, and since we each have a vacancy, that would be really easy to do, to reduce it by one and not have to do a lot of changing. Just my thoughts, but I'll open it to the Board. Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, if we dropped it to 10 rather than 15, it'd be a quorum of six rather than a quorum of eight, right? So it does seem like an easier hurdle to get to. I would support that change as well.
Any other comments? Supervisor Wilson?
If we could make the quorum even, or potential more robust by, instead of reducing the seats from three to two, we would reduce the seats to two, but keep one as an alternate so that if someone felt like they were missing, they could, an alternate could be notified, and then a quorum was more likely to be made.
I'm not interested really in having alternates. It's hard to find people, and it's a large commission, just my personal thoughts. I already have two, like all of us, have two members on there, and I'm, I would be happy just reducing it, having two of the members and then, and just reducing the number that is required for a quorum. Any other thoughts before we go to public comment? Okay, we'll go out to public comment on the Zoom first.
There is none, Chair.
Okay. Can I finish public comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Go ahead, Kent. Thank you.
This totally makes sense to me. You know, that volunteerism is going down. We seem to have less people wanting to be involved in things. This committee's been exceptionally functional. It's, I think Ted Romo, my friend, resigned just a little while ago. And a lot of people, you have a lot of experts who are really sharp in their fields. I mean, this, that's why this is such a function, and the advice you get from them and their participation out there is critical. And the topic's critical. You know, we have some major things going on now regarding the Eel River watershed, whether they're going to be able to continue to irrigate the pastures or not down there. And it's always good to have, have ground truth and experts that can give you advice from that commission. So I want to shout out to the commission itself because of the excellent work they've done over the years. So strongly support downsizing. I think that makes sense. We're having to do that in Blue Lake, just about all our commissions. We had an Arts and Herities, it was gigantic. And we were lucky to even get the minimal amount of numbers, which would be something like five or something like that when it was 15. So sad to see that, but it's just a fact.
Thank you. Tracy?
Thank you for that. I do want to tell you that the, the diversity on this commission is amazing, quite honestly. There are people that are professionals in this purview. There are also just enthusiastic sports people and a very good makeup of the commission as we speak. One of the other things that I wanted to, so the commission, the size of the commission and the quorum was my first concern. The other concern that I had and that I heard some feedback on was the grant process. Currently, the Fish and Game Advisory Commission gets a portion of fines from Fish and Wildlife Department, and then they provide that back to the community in grant surface. They also are allowed to use some of that money as expenditures for their secretarial role in that commission. And there's been some questions about, about that process because the money that is going to the secretarial position then is not available to advocate for the grant program. So one of the discussion items that I provided for you was if you had any concerns or would like to look at that any further.
So could you elaborate? So currently, they, they pay for a secretary position out of the, out of the monies they receive from Fish and Wildlife. And then are you saying there isn't anybody that is managing that grant?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that that money that is being paid for that secretarial position is then not available to distribute through the grant process. So it's really a determination of your board of what it is that you want to do with those funding that is collected. It's always been a process, this has always been an approved process. This is the only board and commission, though, that has a paid contractor that does the secretarial role. Most commissions and committees usually has somebody that is appointed handle that in the volunteer function. It is absolutely acceptable and is what the process has been, but I haven't brought that attention, to your attention before because we haven't looked at this as thorough as we are now. So I just wanted to let you know about that situation as well.
Okay, thank you. Most boards and commissions don't receive grant funding or any funding. And so I think this is an opportunity for them. And, you know, they are, they bring a lot of letters to our board and a lot of documentation. And so I applaud them for having that ability. It would be great if all of our boards and commissions could, and it wouldn't be so. I know our clerk of the board staff helps those boards and commissions a lot, and it puts a lot on your staff. And so I'm okay with the process. Do, do we know how much goes to that secretary?
Well, throughout the history, it's been a different amount. Currently, I think the invoice for this most recent year is, I think it was $3,500, $4,500? $4,500 for this year.
And do we know how much they receive annually? I know it's different because it's on a fine base, but what did they receive?
I think this year they've allotted for their RFPs and their grant funding is a total of $5,000. And they have received, I think, six applications. They're reviewing those this month, and will be distributing that money as they see, as they see appropriate. Some years, they have more grant monies than others. Some years, they have a fund that is handled and managed by the CAO's budget team. And what we do is tell them, this is the percentage of what we've collected, and kind of give them a recommendation on where it is their balance is sitting, and then how much they should or should hold back. And there's been years where there has been grants not issued because that fund balance was too low. And so that's where I just wanted to, you know, kind of explain the situation to you a little bit, a little bit more.
Okay, thank you. CAO, do you have anything to add?
I would just note that the revenues for this commission have significantly decreased over the years due to legislative processes that have reduced fishing game fines that are going into this bucket for allocation. And so as Tracy has said, it has come to a point of a crux, I think, where the amount that is paid for the administrative services is taking up the vast majority of the funding that is available.
Okay, I'll bring it back to my board. Any thoughts? Supervisor Bone?
Is there any chance of changing that funding to a percentage rather than a flat rate? I mean, I, I understand, but they're running a board with 15 members that they have to contact. And I know that if, normally that would cost a lot more money to have done if we were doing it, obviously with all the benefit packages and everything like that. So is there a way we can go to percentage? Or if you really want to affect the volunteerism, take the money away and say one of them has to volunteer and they'll all run for the door.
What, can I clarify? What do you mean by percentage?
Of the amount of grants, if they bring in $10,000 with the grants in, and we're paying 20, 15% for administration, they'd get $1,500 and, you know, whatever the case is.
So cap it at a percentage, okay.
Just cap it at a percentage, so it's not $7,000 when they're bringing in 11.
Before you answer, Supervisor Royal, do you have a comment about this, what Supervisor Bone said, or could, yeah, go ahead.
I am, I am a little confused because I thought they were getting funds from Fish and Game that's not, they're not writing grant proposals. That's like a, it's like a formula, right? That they receive funds from.
A percentage of funds that are fines that are, but it can't be all fines. It has to be specific because I know Fish and Wildlife has, you know, through the cannabis department, they get huge amounts of fines.
It's a very specific, it's a very specific, a specific fine that the Fish and Game Advisory Commission gets a percentage of. It's ticketing for, I think it's like environmental, those type. It's not the big-ticket items like cannabis or, you know, poaching, those kind of issues. So, and, so it's a small percentage of fees. There is, if there isn't a lot of tickets or fees collected from the State Department, then our advisory commission gets less. And, and also just to clarify, so the secretarial position, when I look over the history since like 1993 to current, invoice balance has, has varied. Some years it was 3,000, some years it was 6,000, and then it's now been holding steady at 4,500. It was also established when electronic communication wasn't as popular as it is now as well. So there is just those other things in there that I wanted to just clarify.
So I, I kind of like Supervisor Bone's idea that it's just a percentage of whatever they collect goes to the secretarial position. However, it is hard to do that when you don't know how much money you're going to collect yearly.
And you also want to consider a top out. If you have a really big year and you collect a lot of money, then are they going to be then billing that full percentage amount? So, and I don't, I'm not even sure, like, what the avenue is to set that invoice funding at. I just wanted you to be aware that this is, they are spending some of the money for that purpose. And she does a great job. Please do not interpret this as that. I absolutely appreciate her every month when I don't have to worry about that board and commission.
I think a lot of, you know, organizations just do like a stipend per meeting, you know, a hundred bucks a meeting or whatever. I mean, that, that, I'll just say that that seems very high for the, for a meeting secretary to, again, nothing about the, the person in that role, but $6,000 a year seems, seems high for that particular duty. So I would, I would support setting a per-meeting stipend. And then I think a percentage of fines is dictated by the CDFW staff and their operations and, you know, how many poachers are in the community, which has no bearing really on, on what the Fish and Game Commission is, is doing. So to me, that's not a corollary that, that makes a lot of sense. I would just like to try to establish a, a set rate.
I, I would be concerned with setting a stipend per meeting because I think the secretary works more than just at the meeting. And so I, I would imagine she's chart, it's an hourly rate or something. How does it work now?
It, it's not. She, she has, she's a private contractor, so she just invoices an amount. I do have to tell you that there is meeting prep prior to the meeting. She works directly with the chair to pull together your agenda. She works with our staff to get that agenda then onto the website. She's emailing for quorum. She's at the meeting, and she helps the chair run the meeting and takes the minutes and then distributes those. She does help with the grant process. I think instead of a stipend per meeting, you could do a monthly stipend for the work that she does, or even a, just a clear billable amount.
And so I would be concerned that, that, because she's a private person that does this kind of work, that she would say, no, that's, this is my rate and that's what it is. And then where would that work fall? On the CAO, on the BOSS board or BOSS staff?
Yep, it would fall on the clerk of the board's office. And what we would do then is probably attend another meeting, talk to them about the process and establish the secretarial role out of one of the volunteers. And we would have to assume that until that process was established.
Supervisor Bone?
So it's been averaging, what, 4,500 a year?
So the information that I got from the secretary was from 2020 to current, it's been 4,500 a year.
So we're talking, basically, if she's charging, and I'm just guessing at a number here, but with a consultant and everything else, cheapest consultant in the world, if she was doing approximately $60 an hour, we're talking six hours a month to put out an agenda, get the members there, do the meeting, drive to the meeting. I imagine that includes her mileage too and what she has here. So it's six hours a month for a meeting, for 4,500. I mean, it seems to me we could probably work with them if, if this is that big of concern. Hasn't been a concern. So, I mean, but I, I understand, but I, the last thing I want to do is to end up back because it's really easy for us to say, okay, they'll do this. But we're all like, you know, our clerks are already the travel agents and, and our agents for so many other boards and commissions we're on, I know that for a fact, that they do a lot of stuff on other boards and commissions for me. And I imagine they do the others. So I, I don't know, I wouldn't say it's a bargain, but I don't think we're taking it to the thing. And the other thing is, I would go to 10, 10 members in a minute. One alternate, I guess, but the alternates will usually come in blind, so I don't know if that, but I'm happy with 10 members. And with a good secretary, they will get the people there for a meeting.
Does somebody want to make a motion? I'm not interested in, just my personal thoughts, I'm not interested in changing the secretarial position. I think it's very helpful to them. I don't want our BOSS staff to be encumbered more. I think that it would be a burden to you guys. Not that you wouldn't do it, you would, but it's just going to add a lot more to the plate. And I think it's, that, that commission runs very effectively, and I think it's probably because of the secretary. And so if someone would like to make a motion, we could see if we can get something going here.
Great. I'll move that we cap it at $4,000 a year.
Could you add the membership portion, please, Natalie?
Oh, and reduce the members by one per district.
Well, I, I just have a question. If they don't bring in $4,000 a year, they, they won't be able to even, so I don't know that that would work.
If I may, just for context, over the past four fiscal years, less than $6,600 has been received. And last year, it was 20, just under $2,900 that was received. So in years, like, sorry, that was the '23, '24 year. In a year like that, what the commission does is doesn't do grant funds, they'll hold the funds over, it'll go into fund balance, and then they'll utilize those dollars in the following fiscal years. But just for the context of how that 4,500 relates to how much is actually coming in, it, it's very tight and, and leaves little left for the commission to grant.
That's why I said a cap, but we can continue to discuss it.
Supervisor Madron?
What is the fund balance?
Give me just one moment. So we didn't get a second on that one, so we'll work on, oh, my second, okay.
Still working to post the prior year in fiscal year ending in '24, it was 18,000. Right now, they are for the end of fiscal year '25 reflecting 9,000, or excuse me, 19,000.
So we have a significant fund balance. And from my, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to intervene and say, that doesn't include the 5,000 that were now in the grant fund process, so that will be removed. And we've also just received the invoice for the secretary for the past year. So right there is $9,500 that is now removed from that $18,000 fund balance.
We've never run into a deficit from what I'm hearing here. The fund balance has been able to cover everything, but it's decreasing. It doesn't seem broken to me at this time, frankly. I like changing to 10 people, but as far as the secretary, my own perspective is it's not broken. And if it is broken and we start, you know, edging towards spending more money than we have in the balance, then we could deal with that at that time. But that's just my opinion.
I agree, but we, we'll have to either amend. I guess I'll, I'll do a friendly amendment. I would like to reduce the commission by one person per district and have no cap on the secretary position at this time. That would fall to the secondor.
Sure.
Okay. Kaylee, can we get a?
Yeah. Motion.
Oh, the motioner has to agree.
Sure. It, I really, I'm neither here nor there about it. It seems high, but that's fine. It takes work off your plate, so that's good.
Okay, Kaylee?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Sure.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Sure.
Motion carries 5-0.
So just to be clear, you will be seeing then an ordinance coming from our department making those changes since it's codified in code.
Thank you. Thank you for the report and the work you did on that. Okay, we will go to our final item of the day, which is closed session, and we'll go to county council.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to grant authority to its negotiators regarding the price and terms of payment for the purchase of real property located at 4325 Broadway, Eureka, California, 95501, accessory parcel number 302-171-039. The county's negotiators are identified as Tom Mattson, Humboldt County Public Works Director, and any duly authorized designees thereof. The parties with whom the county may negotiate are identified as John McNellis and any duly authorized designees thereof. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957 in order to consider the public employee performance evaluations for the positions of the Director of Aviation, Agricultural Commissioner, Public Defender, and County Administrative Officer. Finally, it is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D4 in order to discuss the initiation of litigation in one potential case.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment on closed session. We'll go to Zoom first.
There is none, Chair.
We'll go to public comment in the room. Hi, Kent.
Well, it's great to see what we talked about earlier today. Tom Mattson, the negotiating, I totally support Tom in anything he wants to do there, to purchase property and quit some- purchase property and quit some of our leasing maybe and get away from that. So that's really good to see. Consistently seem to have the evaluation of your employees in these positions, say, I don't have any problem with them, be ongoing. I mean, that's, you know, just the part, just, you know, get your thing right, and that's all great. And of course, we have this, again, anticipated litigation initiation. Of course, that seems to be like Groundhog Day every time you come in here on your closed session. But anyway, off we go.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have an estimated time?
I would say approximately two hours.
Okay, so we will take a 10-minute break, so we'll reconvene in closed session at 10:20, and then we will try to get back out here within two hours. So we are in recess. Okay, we're back out of closed session, and we'll go to County Council.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. There was no reportable action taken with regards to items K1 through K6.
Thank you. And then also, we're closing in memory of David Lindberg, who passed away tragically a week and a half ago, and also his obituary came out today. So if you want to read about him, it's in the Lost Coast outpost. Thank you, we are adjourned.